Good evening. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council with me in a moment of Thank you. Would you join the city council with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant L. Abe Veal. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We do have an update from our city manager, Mr. Tate.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things tonight to make sure the council and the community is aware of. And in regards to some several events that are going on, the Fire Department on Thursday, July 11th, at 11 o'clock, will be doing a Fire Station Three uncoupling. So we encourage you to come if your schedules permit to that. I mentioned this last a couple of weeks ago, but the Fairgrounds Indoor Concert Series is ongoing. So there's three concerts coming up, one late this month, and one in July and one in August. So that's on our website if people are interested in that. We encourage folks to come. Very good turnout we've had at the previous concerts. In our recreation area, there's going to be movies in the park, including Saturday, June 22nd, Jurassic Park will be playing at Washington Park at 7:00 PM, which will be a good time. And our, on Friday, June 28th, at The Quarry at Grant Park, from 7:00 to 10:00, we'll be having The Rock at The Quarry, which will, this will be my first time at that event, and I'm told it's very, a lot of fun, a lot of folks going on, fireworks, food trucks, live music. So a great time for everybody to participate. A couple of groundbreakings that'll be going on in the next couple of weeks. On Friday, the 20th, June 28th, at 10:00 AM, the Pace Facility groundbreaking will be ongoing. And on Tuesday, July 2nd, at 11:00 AM, the Salem Parkway Multi-Use Path groundbreaking will be occurring. So we hope that you, council can attend all those and members of the public if they desire. In terms of a few community engagement items to mention, on Tuesday, June 11th, Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful presented Clean and Green Awards to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools that have made an effort to be more environmentally conscious through gardens, educational programs, and activities that beautify their school. One standout example was Diggs-Latham Elementary School, which created ADA-friendly gardening projects such as a hose reel that can be used by wheelchairs to be more inclusive. So I encourage you to go and look on our Winston-Salem Beautiful site to see those events, schools that were recognized. Our Department of Sustainability is still hosting conversations about access to healthy, affordable food near where residents live or work. And so a couple of discussions that are upcoming, Thursday, June 20th, at noon at Rupert Bell Neighborhood Center, and on Wednesday, June 26th, at 7:00 PM at the Spray Street Community Center. And you can find those dates again on our website under our Sustainability area. And then one success story that we wanted to just make sure everybody's aware of, the city was a sponsor of the Habitat for Humanity, Forsyth County's annual Home Builders Blitz. So five homes in the Happy Hill neighborhood were built in five days. Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, Councilmember Cipio, and Councilmember Burke all attended the ribbon cutting that day. And then finally, I'm going to call on Chris Murphy to give you a quick update on where we're at with the sign amortization process, which will be, has consequential dates before you meet again.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Just a little bit of background. Just remember that the city council back in 2007 approved a revised sign ordinance that had an amortization period for freestanding signs of 15 years. And that actually was set to expire in 2022, but because of COVID, we did a couple of year extension. So it expires June 30th of 2024, so about in 13 days. Just a note about that, the typical amortization period for freestanding signs or anything that's going to be amortized is seven years. So we gave 10 additional years over what is typical for that. Just a little bit of history, we have been intentional in our efforts for outreach. We have sent to date five separate letters to folks that we suspect have non-conforming signs. That was in 2018, 2022, 2023, and we've already sent two notices in 2024. We are down to where we only have 16% of signs within Winston-Salem that are not in compliance. That's out of 3,300-plus signs. So we're down to around 500 that aren't in compliance. We've had a number of folks that have reached out or that are in the process of inquiring how they bring their signs into compliance, probably another 250 to 300. So we anticipate a lot more coming into compliance over the next several months. Our goal is not to be punitive. On July 1, we're not going to be sending out notices of violation saying that you are now in violation. We're going to find you. We're going to continue to work with folks, just as we have throughout this whole process. Once we get probably August, September, the folks that have not reached out to begin that process, at that point, we'll probably send one final friendly notice, and then probably late fall, early winters, when we will begin sending notices to those that we have not heard from. But again, if folks are in the process of getting permits, our goal is just as with all of our other enforcement is to gain compliance, not be punitive. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Motion, Mr. Murphy, on the sign ordinance amortization. Mr. Clark.
When I checked a few years ago, most of the ones were, it was a height issue. Is that still the case?
For the most part, it's height. Correct.
Which would be the easiest issue to resolve, as opposed to the size of the...
Could be.
It's complicated.
I've never had a height problem. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is that all, Mr. Tate?
Yes, that's, we're standing ready for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Tate?
Right. Well, thank you. We do have one honorarium tonight, so would the city clerk, please read that one, please.
Item H1, proclamation declaring June 16th through the 22nd, 2024, as National Pollinator Week. Whereas the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, became the 75th B-City USA in 2018, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants in our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades, the city of Winston-Salem has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include municipal parks and greenways, as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas, in honor of National Pollinator Week, the city of Winston-Salem would like to acknowledge the contributions of Forsyth Audubon Society and Bashavia Gardens in establishing the Natural Landscaping Demonstration Garden at the Second Street Park, an effort planned in coordination with the recent Natural Landscaping Ordinance Amendment passed by city council on March 4th, 2024. And whereas, the city of Winston-Salem Sustainability Department is administering the B-City USA project, and therefore is committed to the continued promotion of sustainable land management for the betterment and protection of our local and native insect population. Now therefore, I J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of June 16th through the 22nd, 2024, as National Pollinator Week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are delighted to have with us tonight Maxwell Note, owner and lead horticulturist at the Bashavia Gardens, as well as Andrea Thomas, Vice President of the Forsyth Audubon Society, that will receive these proclamations.
Well, thank you both for the work that you're doing to, quote, "spread the word about the importance of pollinators." We were so happy at the city council. We were actually able to build a pollinator garden over at Quarry Park, and hope more people will do that. So congratulations and thank you. One for you and one for you, if you'd like to say a word, please.
Go right there. Thank you both for what you're doing there. Tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of the council is to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Of course, items on this agenda have been unanimously approved by a committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individual. Item is not removed, and the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Councilmember Monday has asked for item C4. Are there any other items that council members would wish to pull?
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Balance.
Okay. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Larson.
C2.
C2. Okay, sure thing. So we do have a motion to approve the consent agenda, with exception of items C2 and C4. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. And that's unanimous. We go to item C2, please.
Item C2, resolution awarding annual blanket purchase orders for sole-source vendors.
Mr. Larson.
I'm sort of curious about this item because I see there's a lot of outside agencies outside the city of Winston-Salem that are purchasing, who are purchasing as sole providers of equipment. And I hope that we'll be able to provide, Winston-Salem will be able to provide sole providers for these city needs. And I'm curious as to what the criteria that is used in the selection of these particular vendors.
Sure. I'll try to answer the question as purchasing director. Most of these contracts have to do with WISTA, where they're specific to the software, the equipment that's installed. So I think at some point, we may try to bid that, although that's going to fall under RATP dev to move these contracts forward, you know, for the future. The things for property facility management are related to items that are under warranty, or like in the case of the firing range, where we have a contract with somebody for maintenance of that was the installer. So we are continuing in the service with them to maintain warranty, things of that nature. So the list is significantly less than we've presented in the past.
Yeah. As we look at making selection for contractors and for executing work, is the location within the city limits a criteria to help these particular people or...
It isn't. Location is still not used. I mean, you know, since last March, we've not, so these have not been bid, you know, first of all. And then right now, location is still suspended. So we're going to be talking about that in August.
The initial work and then the follow-up maintenance work and the supplying of parts and labor and whatever.
Right.
To maintain these systems once they're in place.
Right. We're just trying to keep everything running and operating.
It's falling outside of the purview of our own contractors in the city.
Yes. I don't know. I guess we'll have to get you an answer on that, because I'm not sure what could be done by local contractors. I'm thinking the Brady train and the Schneider. Schneider has to do with our automation. So, you know, the badge readers and everything. We've basically, once we contracted with them, because of the software's proprietary, we're kind of locked in with them as far as the maintenance and adding new badge readers and new facilities as we go. Brady train was our only bidder. Number seven, the air cleaning specialist, the Plimovent they used at the fire stations, we've standardized on their equipment. So whenever we do a new fire station, we put in Plimovent, and they're the only North Carolina company that maintains them.
I guess the point that I'm making is that when we sign contracts, there's a hidden cost in there that comes back later to the city. And we don't really acknowledge that upfront directly. I mean, there's no proprietary. When we buy this material, we know it's proprietary. It's not likely that we're going to go outside of these people for competitive bids for maintenance or supply parts.
Yep.
That's a question. I mean, I'm not expecting an answer, really.
No, it's something on my plate to do over this next year, to look at all these contracts that were, you know, outside vendors and get this bid.
I'd just like for our homefolk people to have first best shot at these contracts. And realistically, where the car starts shipping something from Greensboro to picking up something from Patterson Avenue is, you know, quite a lot of difference, I would think, operationally. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Larson, are you ready for a motion, Mr. Larson?
I move approval.
Is there a second? Motion second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no.
It's verbal?
No, we're on the machine.
It got pulled.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. And item C4?
Item C4, consideration of items related to purchase orders for the following contracts: resolution awarding purchase order for mowing tractors, resolution awarding purchase order for hybrid compact SUVs and sedans.
Councilwoman Monday.
Thank you. I don't need any kind of presentation. I just want to highlight something, and then I do have a question. It's been a long time that we've been asking for hybrids and EVs, and I know that the backup in production and supply, rather, yeah, high demand, low supply has been the reason. But just to point out that this is for a hybrid compact SUV and sedan, so I'm very pleased to see that. I do want to ask a question about the mowing tractors and other equipment that's used by vegetation. Seems like there are electric options in just about every one of those pieces of machinery. And are we making an effort to go green in vegetation, which is kind of appropriate?
Wow. Great question. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
This is a cooperative that we found that meets spec, and I think it's a current spec, but it's a good question.
That's another good way to reduce our carbon footprint. I would just encourage us to look for options there as well.
Okay.
And with that, I'll move for approval of C4.
Thank you. Sure, second.
Second.
Motion second on C4. All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. Thank you. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. Murphy, Monday, excuse me. Got that Murphy down there. All right. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. Of course, we have the adoption of the annual city budget tonight, as well as a public hearing on the budget. There are three public hearings on zoning petitions. There's a public hearing of a resolution on economic development assistance, and there are three resolutions on various matters there. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there's opposition to a zoning case, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. On the other public hearings, individuals are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. We always ask you if you would give your name and address for the record. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and again Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the watch meetings online option. So we have item G1, please.
Item G1, public hearing and consideration of the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the city of Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Before we do the public hearing, our budget director, Mr. Tash, is going to give us a brief presentation of this year's budget.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and members of the city council.
Good evening.
The first 20 items on your agenda, general agenda tonight, are related to budget adoption, many of them the ordinances themselves, as well as a few resolutions and code changes related to fees that are in code. I do have a very brief presentation before we get started with the public hearing. There we go. There were several priorities as we looked at the fiscal year 24-25 budget. Those included investing in our employees in terms of compensation and benefits, maintaining a level of service that the residents and the council has asked us to, making sure that we have adequate operating resources to meet the needs of those services, and then most importantly, planning for the future in a sustainable way, and looking at how our strategic plan may change next year, and thinking about multi-year budgeting. The overall budget for the fiscal year '25 is just under $660 million. You can see over to the right there, the increases by year, over last year by type in terms of operating debt, service, and capital. We have been through all of this before, and would encourage anyone who wants to see that to look at the budget workshop videos we have. The major drivers of that nearly $660 million in terms of year-to-year change, as we discussed, the compensation study, there is a large leasing fund balloon payment. Again, that fund goes up and down year-to-year based on how the debt is issued. You do also see a pretty large chunk, almost $9 million, in terms of vehicle and equipment acquisition. Almost all of that is replacement, as we are trying to stay on schedule with the equipment and vehicles that our people need in order to do the jobs they are assigned to do every day. Do have some tax and fee increases. We have property tax increases, as well as water and sewer, stormwater, and the motor vehicle privilege tax, all that we have talked about multiple times. In terms of what those look like for a median resident in the city of Winston-Salem, you do see that with our proposed tax rate and the fees that we have for water and sewer, stormwater, solid waste, as well as the motor vehicle privilege tax, we would be significantly less in terms of that overall tax and fee burden than any of the other four largest cities in North Carolina. So even though we do have a proposed tax rate increase, that rate, again, is applied against someone's taxable value for their home. And in our case, because of the rebalance cycle, those taxable values at the median level tend to be significantly lower than our counterparts across the state. And that is all I have for you before the public hearing.
Any questions, Mr. Tash? Thank you, Mr. Tash. Before the public hearing, we had one person who signed up, India Mack. If you would please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I am India Mack, 419 Spruce Street. And I just came up to say thank you all for your continued support of North Carolina Black Reproporteur Company. Just wanted to highlight two things. One is that we are excited to report that we have serviced 240 Winston-Salem State Public School students this year, which is 200% increase in previous years. And I want to extend an invitation to the 2024 International Black Theater Festival to all of you and everyone sitting behind me, July 29th through August 3rd. We hope to see you there as we continue to stimulate the Winston-Salem economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard on the budget? All right. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on with the agenda. Item G2, please. Sorry. I need to close the public hearing. I think I did, but...
I mean, you did.
You did.
Yeah.
Item G2, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
I'm going to be recognizing the Chairman of Finance Committee many times tonight. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 24-25, which sets the tax rate at 72.5 cents per 100 of assessed value.
Second.
Motion second, second by Mayor Protem Adams. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-2025.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-25, authorizing multi-year appropriations for various funds.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Adams. Any further discussion, questions? Mr. Clark.
I would like to point out, for the first time that I can remember in the capital budget, we actually list the projects that were approved in previous years that are actually still taking place. And that, I thought, was a major helpful addition. While we are approving a number of new projects in the budget, a lot, if not most, of what we will actually work on is stuff that was approved in years past that takes a while, particularly on capital budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to see a bunch of items going through here where we're excusing council members from voting on particular items. And that's because state legislation requires that a city council person be recused from voting if they're a member of a board or commission or organization. So that's what we're seeing, those motions to excuse. So G4, please.
Item G4, motion to excuse council members McIntosh, Cipio, and Monday from item G5.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that's unanimous, to excuse council members McIntosh, Cipio, and Monday from G5. And then we'll have item G5.
Item G5, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-2025, for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to the downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, Caladium, Family Services, Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, and Mixer Makerspace, and adopting a tax rate of 9 cents per $100 of assessed value in the downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Mr. Clark.
Okay. I can reread it. I move the annual appropriation and tax levy for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-25, for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to services provided by the downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, Caladium, Family Services, Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, and Mixer Market Space, Makerspace, and adopting a tax rate of 9 cents per 100 of assessed value in the downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. Thank you. That's passed with five in favor, two excused.
Excuse three.
Oh, we got excuse three.
Three.
I think it only showed up on the thing two there, but three are excused. Item G6?
Item G6, motion to excuse council member Taylor from item G7 and G8.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Taylor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. And we'll have item G7.
Item G7, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2024-2025, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for marketing and communications to include advertising, books, magazines, and periodicals by fund, together with a financial plan for internal service funds.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for advertising and select books, magazine, and periodical budgets for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2024-25.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed? Vote no. And that is unanimous, with Councilmember Taylor being excused. Item G8?
Item G8, project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024-2025, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues on advertising, books, magazines, and periodicals for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, and thereafter, for select special revenue funds.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for... I move to approve the project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024-25, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenue on advertising, books, magazines, and periodicals for fiscal year 2024-25 and thereafter for select special revenue funds.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is, again, unanimous with Councilmember Taylor being excused. Item G9.
Item G9, motion to excuse Councilmembers Cipio, Clark, and Larson from voting on item G10.
I move that G9 excuses Councilmembers Cipio, Clark, and Larson.
Second. Second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of excusing these folks, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Y'all are excused. Now we'll go to item G10.
Item G10, annual appropriation tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, authorizing the city's annual operating appropriations for anticipated revenues and expenditures for Piedmont Triad Regional Council, the National League of Cities, River Run, and the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Recognize the Vice Chairman of Finance Committee, Mayor Protem Adams.
Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for anticipated revenues and expenditures related to certain nonprofit agencies for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 24 and 25.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Discussion. All those in favor of this item, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes with five in favor and three excused. Item G11.
Item G11, motion to excuse Councilmembers Burke, Cipio, and Larson from voting on items G12.
Is there a motion?
I move to excuse Councilmembers Cipio, Burke, and Larson from voting on item G12.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of this motion to excuse these councilmembers, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous to excuse these councilmembers. Item G12.
Item G12, project budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024 to 2025, authorizing appropriations for expenditures and revenues for federal housing funds to include Community Development Block Grant Fund, Home Investment Partnership Trust Fund, Supportive Housing Grants Fund, and Hopwa Fund.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve the project budget ordinance for anticipated revenues and expenditures for federal housing funds for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 24-25.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Adams. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that motion passes with five in favor and three excused for voting. Item G13.
G13, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 through 2029-2030 as a financial planning guide.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve a resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal years 2024-25 through 2029-2030.
Second.
And the motion is seconded by Councilmember Cipio. Discussion, questions? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G14.
Item G14, resolution adopting an order to collect taxes for 2024 fiscal year 2024 to 2025 and delinquent taxes from 2015 through 2023.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve a resolution adopting orders to collect taxes and lanes for the fiscal year 2024 through 25.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. G15.
Item G15, resolution directing the expenditure of opioid settlement funds for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve a resolution directing the expenditure of opioid funds for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor of the item, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Thank you. It's unanimous. Item G16.
Item G16, resolution adopting the user fee schedule for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve a resolution adopting the user fee schedule for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item G17.
Item G17, ordinance amending Chapter 10 Building Inspections, Article 1, six.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the City Code related to inspection user fees.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Discussion. If not, all of us in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G18.
Item G18, ordinance amending Chapter 26 Garbage and Trash, Article 1.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the City Code related to sanitation user fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Discussion. If not, all of us in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Chicken up here somewhere.
Yeah.
We are talking about garbage and trash.
Y'all can't hear that, but it's a chicken up here.
And the chicken abstained.
Items G19.
Item G19, ordinance amending Chapter 34 Licenses and Business Regulations, Article 3.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 34 of the City Code related to motor privilege taxes.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Discussion. If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And then finally, item G20.
Item G20, ordinance amending Chapter 75 Stormwater Management, Article 3.
Mr. Clark.
I move to approve an ordinance amending Chapter 75 of the City Code related to stormwater.
Second. Seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, council. We've got a budget. Congratulations, Mr. Clark, and members of the council.
There's something like I wish I was on commission.
Item G21.
Item G21, public hearing in consideration of the zoning petition of Raise the Roar Investments LLC from GO to GBL, properties located on the west side of Charlotte Boulevard, south of Executive Park Boulevard, containing approximately 1.07 acres located in the southwest ward. Planning Board unanimously recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Petitioners are here for any questions? All right, I will close the public hearing then. I would recognize Councilmember Monday.
I approve for, I move for approval of, number one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W.3616.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Item G22.
Item G22, public hearing in consideration of the zoning petition of Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem, Inc., from RS9 to HB, properties located north of Country Club Road, west of Meadowlark Drive, containing approximately 0.47 acres located in the west ward. Planning Board unanimously recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilwoman Clark.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W.3617.
Second. Motion is seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion, questions? If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G23.
Item G23, public hearing in consideration of the zoning petition of William J. Garrus and VG Gordon Ayers from RS9 to GBL, properties located on the west side of South Stratford Road, north of Dinsmore Street, containing approximately 0.67 acres located in the southwest ward. Staff recommends denial and Planning Board recommends approval of petition with five in favor and two opposed.
Councilmember Monday has a motion.
Yes, we're going to continue this one. I move that W.3618 be continued until the city council's meeting on August 19th, 2024.
Second.
Second to continue this to August 19th. All those in favor of the motion to continue, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed to this continuance, vote no. And that is continued. Item G24.
Item G24, public hearing in consideration of economic development assistance for Project Sully pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1. Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Mr. Ken Millet, to give us a brief summary of this project.
Thank you, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. You will recall that when this was discussed in closed session at Finance Committee, we referred to it as Project Sully. We're pleased to say that the name of the company that is considering Winston-Salem is Excel Interior Door. They're based in Alabama. They've been in business for over a decade. They're planning to open a second facility to serve its growing east coast customer base. In addition to Winston-Salem, they are considering other communities in North Carolina as well as South Carolina. They have requested financial assistance to reduce the cost of opening the new facility. That would create 69 new jobs and an average salary of over $51,000. And involve a capital investment of $10.5 million over the first five years of the project. Positions at the planned facility include production operators, maintenance staff, material handlers, forklift operators, and administrative staff. Staff does recommend performance-based economic development incentives of up to $144,313, which does represent 50% of the net new property taxes expected to be generated in the project's first five years. Forsyth County did approve incentives last week for this project, and the state of North Carolina is also considering incentives. We do have staff from Greater Winston-Salem here in support of the project, as well as, excuse me, as well as the CEO of the company is here as well.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Millet? We've talked about this several times. Thank you, Mr. Millet. This is a public hearing. Is anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed economic development project? If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
Ellis Kiefer, 525 Vine Street. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of council. Greater Winston-Salem is excited to present Project Sully today for incentive consideration. We're grateful that Excel Interior Door has identified Winston-Salem as an attractive location for its operations. As part of the site selection process, the company saw opportunities in Winston-Salem specifically because of our workforce strength and reputation in advanced manufacturing. As we mentioned last week, the company is eager to create workforce development opportunities through Forsyth Tech and other local partnerships. The 69 jobs and $10.5 million of investment created by this project will have a meaningful impact on the individuals and families in Winston-Salem. And the project furthers our economic development strategy to grow our advanced manufacturing sector. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This did come from Finance with unanimous vote. Mr. Clark.
I move for approval of agenda item G24.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Adams. Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Keep bringing those projects back, Ms. Kiefer. Item G25.
Item G25, the adoption of ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, entitled Boards and Commissions of the Winston-Salem City Code, creating the Civil Service Board of the City of Winston-Salem. Public Safety Committee forwarded without recommendation.
Mr. Clark, would you like to make a comment on this?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members.
Good evening.
Rather than going through that 19-page PowerPoint, I'll just hit the highlights.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
As you all know, this is a mandate from the General Assembly. Legislation was passed in August of last year mandating the creation of a Civil Service Board for Greensboro and the city of Winston-Salem. It is a five-member board. The members are to be appointed, selected, and elected as follows. One elected by the employees in a classified service of the police department, one elected by the employees in a classified service of the fire department, one selected by mutual agreement of the police chief and fire chief, one appointed by city council, and then one selected by the other four members of the Civil Service Board. If one of those bodies fails to appoint, select a member, then city council by default will appoint that member. Employees in a classified service exclude the police and fire chiefs, their deputies and assistants, and new employees during their probationary period. The terms of office will be two years, and they can serve consecutive terms. Qualifications for members of the Civil Service Board must be a city resident, not employed with the city within the past seven years, cannot be a council member, and must not have a conflict of interest, in particular, contract with the city of Winston-Salem. City council will select the chair of the board, the Civil Service Board will select the vice chair, and the clerk's office will serve as secretary. The Civil Service Board will hear appeals from members in a classified service if the appeal relates to the discharge, suspension, reduction in rank, transfer of the employee against his or her will, or the denial of a promotion or raise in pay to which the employee would be entitled. Once the Civil Service Board is impaneled, their first duty will be to adopt a meeting schedule and start the process of drafting rules of procedure, which will have to come to city council for approval after a public hearing. And that is the ordinance in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Korman? Back in touch.
We had asked at a prior meeting about term limits for some of these appointments. Is that part of, I didn't pick that up in here, is that going to be part of it, or we don't have the ability to?
When I had a discussion with legislative drafting, excuse me, about that particular question, they indicated that city council could not impose term limits because it was not part of the legislation. So this ordinance does not impose term limits for the members of the Civil Service Board.
It's problematic. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes. City Attorney, could you give a very short run-of-show of what this bill is? What is it that we have to do? I really don't think the audience in the community knows, even though I have to give it to the press and the media, they have been talking about this about as long as we have from the state. But if you could just tell the audience what this is that we're doing, because I see some looks, they don't know what this is about. So if you could do that in short.
Sure. This, as I indicated, is a mandate from the state. It creates a five-member Civil Service Board to hear appeals of certain matters from employees in a classified service within the police department and fire department. It is not like the Citizen Police Review Board. I know there was a lot of confusion about that board and how this might be similar to that board, and it's not. This is basically to hear appeals from those employees in a classified service within the police and fire department. The Citizen Police Review Board hears or reviews complaints and appeals from citizens against employees in the police department. So it's different. But again, this is a mandate, so council has to pass this ordinance.
One more.
Councilman.
How many cities in the state presently? Is every city mandated? It was just certain cities?
No, every city is not mandated to create a Civil Service Board. This legislation only applies to the city of Winston-Salem and the city of Greensboro. Now, there are other, there are a few other cities that have a civil service board. Now, there are a few other cities that have a civil service board, but that's pursuant to legislation that was passed earlier. But this applies only to Greensboro and Salem.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mayor Protem, this item has been thoroughly reviewed at the public safety committee level. At this time, I will move for approval of item G. 25.
Second.
Motion is second by Councilmember Monday. And Councilmember Burton, did you ask to be recognized?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Carmen, for once again thoroughly explaining this civil service review board. I am, I know that it is a mandate, and it's going to happen. I know that. So I'm just going to start with what I hear Chair Taylor say at the beginning of every public safety meeting that we have. We have the best as far as our police department and our first responders. And I just want to say, we are proud to have you all lead us and serve us in this community. The criteria that you mentioned is very low. The bar is very low as far as this five-member board. Just be a resident, not be a member of the city council, not have been employed for the last seven years. And is it one more that I'm missing?
Not have a conflict.
Not have a conflict. That bar is very low. When I think about the kind of training that our chiefs have gone through, our firefighters have gone through, our police officers have gone through, when I think about the experience, the knowledge that they have regarding the state regulations and federal regulations, the processes that must be applied, and to know that five individuals who don't meet this criteria will be making decisions that overturn decisions that our chiefs will be making. It's alarming. As I said, I know it's a mandate, but I just had to say, the math ain't mathin'. It does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification.
Carmen?
The members will have to meet the criteria.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion to approve this, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes, six in favor and two against this motion. All right, item G. 26.
Item G. 26, Consideration of Items Related to North Cleveland Avenue and Willie Davis Apartment Project. Located in the northeast ward, Finance Committee recommends approval, three in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. We're again simply asking council to award this construction contract, as well as approve the budget amendment, so that we can fund this project and get going. Do you have any questions for me or staff?
Questions, Mr.? I would entertain a motion.
Members, Mayor, the council, I move for approval of item G. 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Clark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes, seven in favor, one opposed. And then item G. 27.
Item G. 27, Resolution on the Peter Oliver Pavilion Gallery Land. Finance Committee recommends approval, two in favor, two abstaining.
Thank you. We have looked at this, and certainly, Mayor Protem Adams, you voted in favor of this. I'd interview you if you were ready for a motion.
Yes, members, Mayor, I move for approval of item G. 27.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Supio. Councilmember McIntosh.
I just want to say, I appreciate the staff filling us in and giving us information. It actually was on the original one when we voted on it last week, but that really did clarify and make it easier for me to accept this.
Good. Thank you, Ms. McIntosh. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I see members of the creative corridors are here. We're glad to have you continue to work on this. All right, the next item is the public comment period. This is a time once per month that we invite citizens to address, meet and the city council on matters that are germane to city government. We would ask that each speaker give their name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. And the total amount of time allotted for this is 30 minutes. First person to sign up is Derek, I believe it's Walker. Yes, sir. Doing great, Mr. Walker.
I am representing the Housing Spring Company and the residents at 800 North Spring Street. If I could please have them stand up to see who I'm representing today?
Would you state your name for the record?
Jerick Walker.
Thank you.
Greetings from the Housing Spring Company, located at 800 North Spring Street, Winston-Salem. Founded in January 2024 out of necessity by its eight tenants who seeked to obtain and maintain their current residence. Thirty years ago, the city of Winston-Salem sold ESR dislocation for $1 with the goals of sustaining affordable housing and helping citizens experience self-reliance. With minimal attention over the years and improvements, this location has suffered, and it's becoming more noticeable as you look around our neighborhood and around us. As residents, we have experienced months with no sanitation, months with no lawn care, and extremely long wait time for maintenance requests, with complaints filed with ESR and the city by several residents. Instead of ESR honoring its promises to its residents, it sold our location back to the city for a $600,000 profit. Outrage by not only being sold out, but not knowing the predicament most residents would be in. Unfortunately, the city decided to go ahead with the sale, which have had us managed by third-party management places, which means it still takes a long time for sanitation requests to get met, for anything to be done around there. And we are waiting, we're counterwaiting to be lying somebody's pocket, basically. You guys agreed in January to make a sale with Jared Rogers, which contract has still not been executed. We have been in constant contact with you guys, City Attorney, waiting for some type of transparency to know what's going on with the deal. And the same thing, we get told every time, that the contract has already been executed. But if you look on you guys' website, you guys are still the owners. When we talk to the people who are managing us currently, they tell us guys are still the owner of the property. So what we are asking for is a stop to the deal if it's not going to be executed, or a transparent timeline on what's actually going to happen with us and our lives at 800 North Spring Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The City Attorney has sent out a memo today that actually explains all that, and we can certainly get a copy of that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Hayes?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. My name is Nate Hayes. I live at 312 Forest Hills Avenue. We have two conflicting contradictory forces in our city. One wants all residents to live peacefully and happily, and one wants money. One wants to save working-class families from houselessness. The other wants to gentrify our city. One wants to build a city that works for everyone, and the other wants to line their pockets. How does it make any sense? It is a point that we can have high-rise buildings out here on our streets and homeless people dying right in front of them. Members of the city council, you have a choice to make. Every single person in here wants affordable housing. Not a single person in this audience wants their rent to be raised. If you truly represent your constituents, then you will approve the Affordable Housing Trust Fund into the budget. There are $650 million in the budget this year, almost $660 million in the budget. Surely you can spare some for the people of the city that voted you in the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Tosh Hargrove. Hargrave, excuse me.
My name is Tasha Hargrave, with an O. I live at 2293 Mueller Drive. My name is, again, Tasha Hargrave. You have seen me before. I am the lead organizer of Forsyth Freedom Federation, and I am not representing a ward or a street. I'm representing the working-class people of Winston-Salem. The last three months, we have run an issue campaign, and the issue campaign was called Trust for All. We have been to every ward. We have spoke to, we had 1,500 conversations. We have 350 petition signatures, and we've registered 500 new voters. And there's a constituency, your constituency is stating that they don't feel like they're being heard. So I'm here to voice this for them. Housing is a big issue. It is a fire that is engulfing Winston-Salem, and they feel the city council has the water, but you're not putting it out. Contrary to popular belief, not everybody's dream is to have a garage, but it is their dream to have quality, affordable housing. Not everyone, that is not their reality they live to. Imagine working all day and you come home to a tent. That's a lot of people in Winston-Salem they live that. So what we asked is that the city pay more attention and put the need towards housing and create affordable housing for its constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff Maxwell?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jeff Maxwell. I'm a relatively new resident to Winston-Salem. I live at 121 Fern Leaf Lane, over on the west side, Jeff. Leaf collection isn't just about tidiness. It's a plan to prevent clogged sewer drains, flooded streets, and ensure proper waste disposal. I believe in a multi-pronged approach to tackling the challenges we face every fall with the leaf collection service here in Winston-Salem. So to that end, in addition to loose leaf vacuum collection and the utilization of yard waste carts, I'm recommending the city also allow residents to use compostable paper bags weekly. You don't have to go far to see other examples in other municipalities. Over in High Point in 2023, the city began weekly collection of disposable paper yard bags in addition to curbside vacuum and yard waste carts. Greensboro overhauled its plan in February of 2024, ending vacuum collection and instead adopting a weekly collection of yard waste carts and up to 15 biodegradable paper yard bags per household. By the way, that strategy is promoted to save $10 million over the next 15 years. Raleigh's Leaf Collection Program mirrors High Point. In Charlotte, since 2021, adopted a plan that requires residents to use compostable paper bags or reusable personal containers. As a side note, this yard waste includes leaves, grass clippings, small limbs, and brush. These examples from other North Carolina cities underscore the importance of adopting new strategies to attain a more cost-effective and efficient leaf collection service. And at the same time, they facilitate the implementation of new best practices to enhance safety, safety of sanitation division employees, as well as safety of neighborhoods, including the hazards presented by wet leaves. So I have a real simple ask of city council, and it's straightforward. What will it take for the city to adopt a compostable paper yard bag option in time for the 2024-2025 Fall Leaf Collection Program? Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell.
Good evening, everyone. It's Aurora Dixon, High Protem and Mayor. I'm here representing the National Juneteenth Alliance, and I'll start by saying that Black American history is American history. I've been living here in Winston-Salem about six months now, and I specifically came here because I saw the need. There was a highly, a large Black American community, and as a Black American myself, a descendant of American chattel slavery, I felt the need to be here and amongst the people. One of the things I noticed was the fact of Juneteenth came, and the colors that were being flown around, being advertised by the Juneteenth Committee here are incorrect. The Juneteenth colors are red, blue, and white, just like the American flag, or preferably gold-blue, excuse me, gold-red and black, like the Black American heritage flag. We will, Juneteenth is about the commemoration of our ancestors and what we fought for to get our freedom in this country, and we would like for it to be celebrated in a proper fashion. So I did make a call, and I spoke to Tamra from its Hainsburg office, and was advised to call the mayor's office in regards to having the proper Juneteenth flag flown as we do the American flag on June 19th. And I still haven't had a return phone call in regards to it. So I'm still inquiring and still asking that the Juneteenth flag be flown on June 19th, which is in a couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Hurson? Cynthia Hurson? Sorry, I can't, I just got to her word.
Greetings, everyone. Cynthia Hurson, 1200 Willie Davis Drive, northeast ward. We want to know what is the plan? On one side, I see plans of revitalization, which is nice, and in the back of us, we see a big sign for new houses in the low $200,000. What is the plan? How does this benefit the community when 99.9% of the community is making minimum wage less than $15 an hour? Mr. Jimmy said this plan was for us, for the community, but all we see is hustle and flow. I would like to get a 78-year-old veteran, Army veteran, approved for a $75,000 mortgage loan. So how is this for us in the community? We got the man of transparency, and what is the plan for the residents of 1200 Willie Davis Drive and 1635 Cleveland? Our lease expired May the 31st, 2024, and as of today, we don't have a signed lease. And we are requesting a meeting. We demand to know what is the plan. I will always stand for transparency and for the right of the voiceless, the people, not for the wealthy who caused the shot against the people. Thank y'all. Y'all have a great day.
Olivia Doyle?
Olivia Doyle, 112 West Devonshire. Last time I was here, I advocated that the city make Bear, the Bear Team, a permanent line item in the budget using funds pulled from various sources. But what was clear in 2020 remains clear today, which is that Bear needs to become an independent crisis response team funded from a reallocated police budget. With the passing of Mr. Yercoy Shuler, the WSPD has yet again proven itself incapable of protecting and serving Black life, and seemingly incapable of calling either Bear or EMS to assist a Black man who, according to the news, was described as acting erratic, but generally cooperative and nonviolent. Our community is supposed to be able to rely on Bear to step in when we are experiencing anything from a mental health crisis to a substance use disorder, and they're meant to prevent the deaths that so often come out of police brutality, or in this case, negligence. Mr. Shuler should have been able to rely on Bear, but the cops didn't think to call them. The cops didn't even think to call EMS until after he fell unconscious. We cannot rely on cops to keep us safe, and we cannot continue to fund the WSPD more than we fund alternative community safety measures like Bear, restorative justice, a right to counsel. You all have already made it clear that you do not care about the lives of Palestinians or our participation in their genocide. Your lack of commitment to a ceasefire resolution, to a right to counsel, or any other form of housing justice, and to defunding the WSPD since at least 2020 are choices which reflect a lack of commitment to Black, Brown, and low-income people in Winston-Salem and beyond. So who are you actually committed to? Who do you actually care about? Because it's not, it's not, it's not a portion of the Winston-Salem community. Because it's not, it's not, it's not a portion of the Winston-Salem community.
Miranda Jones?
Miranda Jones, 405 Corona Street. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of city council. Earlier today, Dr. Miles said something that is still resonating with me. She said being pulled over by the police should not result in death, and I do agree with that. So I won't go into the usual rhetoric about Black Lives Matter or the soundbites because they don't result in systemic change. It is not lost on me that this rarely happens to white people. They're not laying on the ground like the video of Yerkois Shuler. And I'm not saying that they should be, but we see this happen a lot when it comes to Black people, particularly Black men and also Black women. And I have a problem with that. Mayor Jones, I want to remind you of something you said in 2020 amidst the uprising. You said, "As mayors, we work closely with the police leadership in our cities, and we know that they also will not tolerate this kind of police violence and racism within their forces." So my question to you and city council is do you work as closely to stop negligence? Something is amiss with the death of Yerkois Shuler. Something is amiss with the state investigating itself. Something is amiss with this process playing itself out over and over again like bad theater at nauseam. Something is amiss with the press conferences that we are sure will come with the Black representatives that do not generally represent the Black masses, who are often the gatekeepers who tell us to trust the process and reforms, the reforms that actually don't work, right? And they pledge that they're going to work together, and then the people will go back to sleep until this happens all over again when a Black man or woman is laid dead on the street. So I have another few questions. Where was Bear? Where was the EMS? What was the wait time? And lastly, the people, we come here all the time and we ask you for this resolution, right? But that continues to be ignored. Meanwhile, over 100 cities have actually signed a ceasefire resolution to pressure the Biden administration. And also, on the topic of securing American Sign Language interpreters for the International National Black Theater Festival, which I think is awesome, Mr. Mayor, we've emailed you a bunch of times, so we have not gotten a response. And it is not amiss that you have not heard from the Black deaf community. This is a community that has been marginalized over and over and over. And many of them were not well-educated. And so I do implore you to reach out to people like Amatullah Saleem and her daughter Oprah, who was not well-educated here in our own, in our own city. And so as a general educator and as a special educator and as an activist and as a Black woman, I am profoundly disappointed in my city, a city that pleads itself as the city of arts and innovation. I do not think that we're being inclusive, and I do think that we need to do a much better job. Thank you.
Sophia Kurtman? Anita Miles? Arnead Miles?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Adams, city council members. I am Dr. Arnead Miles, 494 Smithdale Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Have any of you not sped in the city of Winston-Salem? Think about that question. And if you say, "No, I have not," you know, you're giving me a falsehood. Because I guarantee every person in this room has sped in the city of Winston-Salem. But does speeding or committing a traffic violation mean that you're supposed to die? Does rolling through a stop sign or a stoplight mean that you're supposed to die? I continue to pray for the Allen and the Shuler family because a traffic violation has led to a disappearance. A traffic violation has led to a death. Imagine if that was one of your family members who just simply was speeding and got pulled over or had a little bit too much to drink, Councilmember Burke? And you get a citation or, "Can I search your car?" And you say, "No." Don't you have the freedom to say no? You only committed a traffic violation. I and all the people who have called me, sent me that video and requesting that the city of Winston-Salem do an investigation of the data of the Winston-Salem Police Department and its traffic stops. We know driving while Black exists in this city. We're not saying that we don't have good men and women working for the Winston-Salem Police Department. But does that mean they're supposed to say, "Can I search every vehicle looking for drugs"? What are you looking for? Are you looking for the opioids that you're receiving those millions of dollars for? I think Ms. Burke earlier said, "The math is not mathing. Be people of your word." Let the math start maffing with the Winston-Salem Police Department today. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Mayers. I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. As I often do, I came tonight to talk about sustainability issues, but there are folks here tonight talking about life and death. So I'm going to not speak anymore and just give up my time, and I will email you all later.
Blajin? Tariq Blajin, if I'm saying it right? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council?
Yes, sir.
My name is Tariq Blajin. I'm a transplant from New Jersey. I've been in the city of Winston-Salem. I thought that was me. About four years now. I'm also the owner of the Royallities, an art and antique shop downtown Winston at 415 Off Trade Street, directly behind the transit bus station. I say that because I'm pretty sure some of y'all are, you know, familiar with what goes on in that area and what has probably been going on in that area for many years. So through the past year, I've been having a lot of different issues, you know, that come with being around a transit, you know, station and things of that nature. So I've been able to see things from a different spectrum than most people from the outside looking in. I say that to say this. I'm on both sides of the spectrum. Where as a business owner, it benefits me from people not hanging around and not being around my shop, period, drinking or loitering. But at the same time, like you hear from a lot of the other residents of the city, I think what we're doing is we're addressing the fruit and not the root of the problem, which is that we need to figure out a lot of the issues that are existing in the city. So a lot of the people that do loiter in front of my shop are actually friends of mine. If that sounds strange, I can understand. So I got a minute left. Let me be brief with this. So I also own an acre of land on the south side of Winston that I'm proposing a plan for where we start the first tiny house community in Winston-Salem, which I also build tiny houses and mobile business trailers of all sorts. And what I'm proposing is that I donate the land almost to this project and that we together figure out some type of solution to what the situation is, which is mental health, homelessness, and above all, what I see personally, hopelessness. Where people don't have anything to look forward to, and they might have a roof over their head at one of the shelters around here, but they don't have anything to do in the daytime or anything to look forward to, period. So, you know, a lot of that is what's perpetuating a lot of the situations that's going on, is that people don't have anything to look forward to, which is also part of my plan to employ anybody that's living at the facility of sorts with the tiny house community. I don't know how we're going to figure this out. I just wanted to introduce myself. One, two, I just wanted to throw that out there. Tiny House Community, Winston-Salem. Greensboro, I believe, is already doing this and a few other cities. And I don't hear anybody else donating land, so I figured I'd be the guy, you know?
Thank you.
I'm here.
Tony Ndege, 1713 Chapel Street. I'm here to talk to you about several different issues, so I'll be very quick. Number one, we demand the whole story, the entire story of what happened to Yerkois Deshaun Shuler. The fact is that regardless of whatever happened, as many have mentioned already, Shuler, had he not been stopped, would probably be alive today. Would be alive today. If you don't agree and you know something that we don't, then be transparent. We demand that of you today. What happened to him? Number three, ceasefire. We have a ceasefire resolution that we are asking for you to pass. You can pass one of your own. The fact is that we're gathering hundreds, if not thousands, of petition signatures for a ceasefire resolution with a goal to turn those resolution signatures in early July. We have overwhelming support, overwhelming support. And you've not seen the last of us on that issue by a long shot. Just a day ago at Juneteenth, I was petitioning hundreds of people, and there's overwhelming support for that. Why? Because a lot of people know that many ways what's going on in Palestine is synonymous with the war on us. If you don't believe us, go to a large event yourself and ask folk if they support a ceasefire and ending the US funding of genocide. Because they understand on some level that there is a direct connection between colonial violence and the racist violence of our own system right here. Number four, regarding the city budget, business as usual. The city budget certainly is business as usual in regards to mass incarceration. Between the city and county, combined over $200 million has been appropriated for policing and incarceration. Over $200 million. Just a fraction, a fraction of that $200 million could eliminate homelessness and housing insecurity in this city. Instead, you're incarcerating mostly nonviolent offenders and running their lives, taking them out of humanely, fulfilling their productivity, and living with dignity. I know a lot of you are thinking that if we ended homelessness here, a lot of folks would come here. Guess what? Then we solve that situation and then we organize other cities to do the same. We need people to organize for affordable housing. We do not need more administrators, administrators here in the system. We need real representatives that are paid a living wage for the city council and who organize democratic communities in their cities. That's what we need, a fundamentally different system. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our public comment period. Captain McIntosh for a motion?
I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1183 to consult with and provide instruction to the city's legal staff regarding a legal matter and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Second? Motion second. All is favorable, go into closed session. Please say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose, no? Do you oppose?
No.
I was on the list to speak.
Thank you, Lord.
Motion in closed session.
So moved.
Seconded by, made the motion by Kepner-Taylor, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Adams. All those in favor of ending closed session, say aye.
Aye.
We're at a closed session. We're back to open session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Councilmember Burke to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? We're adjourned.